Welcome you to the school board meeting on Monday, May 15. We have a big crowd here tonight. There are some empty seats down here. Please do join us with Dr. Bracco.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We apologize there's not enough seats, but this is a really good problem to have.
Is the sound system working?
Pardon me?
Is the sound system working?
Are we getting turned off?
I don't think so. I'll try yelling louder. Okay, I'll sit up more. Thank you for joining us tonight. Is that good?
Yes.
Perfect. We welcome you. We apologize there's not enough seats, but we realize that's a good problem to have because we have a lot of attendance. And first thing on our agenda will be the approval, deletion, and addition of Dr. Bracco.
We do have a revised personnel package, another 5A.
Shut off?
Yeah. This is in the register, according to the next station. Both are approved, second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. Any questions, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. And motion carries. Thank you. Next on our agenda is first on this, thank you. Mrs. Pleasant, she is not in attendance tonight. So we will go ahead and look forward to liaison committee updates. Mr. Marshall, do you have anything to update with?
Nothing other than the regular scheduled meeting of Westlake is May 1st and 4th at the school town in Munster. We alternate each bi-monthly, not bi-monthly, it's every two months we meet. But the next meeting will be at Munster. Thank you. And as far as personnel, interview committee, nothing to report.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Marshall. Mrs. Sues, do you have anything to report? Nothing like 20's. Alright, and Mr. Backsop?
The tire park board had a meeting on May 10th. Some of the things are covered. They have a ton line drop cell in the audience where the whole town is involved with that meeting, with that, I mean, drop cell. The duty field day is coming up here soon at our community deal. And while it's in the meeting, they need the deed for the dues. We thank them very much for that. And on to redevelopment commission meeting, which entails the following day, on May 11th. The only thing that really came up of the incident was they're doing a new Asian project in there along Route 30. They'll be doing some things to the brick wall on Route 30 by the CBS and also a diaphragm along Route 30. And with that.
Thank you. Alright, thank you. And on our committee reports for legislative, I really have nothing to report tonight. For the Lake Central Education Foundation, at this point in time, what we're doing is we're having a mattress fundraiser Saturday, May 20th. Proceeds from that, or the vast majority of the proceeds, will go towards the assistance of our science Olympia teams. They have done very well. You would be very proud of them. They have worked so hard. And I believe our high school was fourth in the state. So all of our efforts to increase and support the science Olympia are paying off. So if you need a mattress, that is Saturday, May 20th. The wellness committee, I wanted to let everyone know that with Dr. Bracco's leadership and with the leadership of some of our teachers, we, the Lake Central School Corporation, has been selected to be a presenter at the school board fall conference. The point of conversation at that conference will be the wellness program that is in existence at Lake Central, which is very rare in the state of Indiana for a school corporation to be so aggressive with the wellness. So congratulations, Dr. Bracco and to members of the wellness committee. Thank you. And moving on to item number five, school board business topic, Dr. Bracco.
Thank you again, Dr. Bracco. Seek for approval of the minutes from the special board meeting on May 1st. That was our work session to discuss school board policy and regular board meetings also on May 30th. Those minutes are at your station this evening. Additionally, seek for approval of the claims payable and net worth expenditures or inclusion packets last Thursday.
Motion for pardon?
Second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. Are there any comments about these items? Alright, hearing that, call for both. All in favor?
Aye aye.
All of those same signs? Motion carries. Thank you. Alright, and now, public attendees. Okay, just to make you aware that the item that's on our agenda right now is again, if you wanted to address an agenda topic, this would be your time to speak. And since no one has signed in to address an agenda topic, the next point for public participation will be at the end of the meeting. Alright, so moving ahead to official school board business.
Thank you. We are going to shift the order here, Mr. Delauter, and you are recognition first, and have you go ahead this evening. Kind of some people standing. So we're going to ask our school board to reassemble in the front. What we're going to recognize is both our 2017 retirees and our 2017 teachers of the year. And then follow that up with recognition of the Vittage Elementary Wordmasters Challenge and the Lake Central High School Ethic Certification. So we have a group to recognize tonight. We'll begin with the diaries. I'll turn it over to Mr. Gendolf here as soon as we get reassembled in the front.
Hi, good evening ladies and gentlemen. Can anyone hear me? I have to turn to the microphone. Our goal this evening is to recognize those individuals who are classified as well as certified who have worked for the school corporation and are retiring at the end of this term school year. I will start. Our first one this evening is Al Angel. I will make some comments after each one that were written by the leaders. So Al may come up. Al Angel came to work at Lake Central High School in the fall of 1994 after his successful early career in white. He has taught a variety of science courses at Lake Central, supported our alternative program, helps students with home building structure, and has been a tremendous asset for the Lake Central High School Science Department. He served as freshman class sponsor for several years and prior to having formal holding program to aid in student transition from eighth to ninth grade. Mr. Angel was known for his ability to make students home cook in a 3,000 student high school. Congratulations, Al, and happy retirement. Lori Corbin. Lori Corbin has been with Lake Central for 33 years. I'm trying to get all the ah's out first. She started at Vittage as a primary school aide for eight years and then she worked as a playground supervisor for seven years. In 1999, she became Vittage's librarian and she has remained there for 18 years. In addition to running the library, Lori also coordinates the Veterans Day Program, the Accelerated Reader Program, and the Announcement Team. She oversees the arrival of the four school turdern, morning arrival, and afternoon dismissal. Lori can recall the name of almost every Vittage student, home, and current. Although she will be dearly missed by her Vittage family, retirement will allow Lori to spend more time with her husband Dale and their family in Red Bull. Sherri Coswell. It's going to be hard for a homie staff to walk by when two of two and not see Mrs. Coswell. She has been such a staple in the school community. Out of her 33 years of teaching, 28 of those being in the Lake Central school system. She has touched the lives of hundreds. From students to parents to teachers, Sherri always has time or made time for everyone. She was the teacher that was at every evening function to support the school and her students. Sherri has dedicated her life to her teaching position for 33 years. Now it's time for her to relax and do everything that she wants to do and never miss a Cubs game. Connie Radgrateson. Connie, as he is affectionately referred to by his fellow corporation maintenance friends, has served Lake Central for 10 years. He has gotten up early to plow snow and make the arrival of students, staff, and parents safe for all. He has always had a pleasant demeanor and will be greatly missed by his peers and supervisors. Congratulations, Connie. Roberta Harmon. It is difficult to summarize the career accomplishments of Roberta Harmon after 19 dedicated years of past teaching at Lake Central High School. Roberta has always been the teacher who puts countless hours into serving our students. Her students have benefited from her expertise in many different science subjects as well as her compassion and dedication to ensuring Lake Central students are successful in and out of the classroom. Quite often, Roberta could be found staying late, working on lesson plans, tutoring students, grading assignments, and serving on numerous committees over the years. We are so fortunate that I had Roberta as faculty member of Lake Central High School. She has left an endless impression on many of her coworkers and will always be remembered as a crashmate and loyal colleague and friend. Congratulations. Silvana Morgan. Silvana is completing her 23rd and final year at Lake Central. She taught grade five for many years at Trustman and got fifth grade merit at Clark prior to becoming a tech trainer a couple of years ago. She has served the students and staff proudly and we wish her well in her retirement. Congratulations. Jeannie Murzike. It's a proud school nurse. An individual that has compassion, caring, dedicated, and loves her role as a school nurse. Throughout her years, 30 of them, she has had a tremendous impact on the lives of many students. From bloody noses to broken bones to diabetic to tube feeding, Ms. Murzike has always done her job with dignity and respect. Her medical expertise and attention to detail are just some of her outstanding qualities. One of the best nurses I know who cares about kids. Jeannie will be missed not only as a school nurse, but as an individual that has devoted her life to helping others. Congratulations. Patty Nootson. Patty has been an elementary teacher for the Lake Central School Corporation and cut out the Watson family for 30 years. Her dedication to education and keenness in communicating with whole staff and parents helped foster many positive relationships over the years. Patty's commitment to Watson will be missed by all. Congratulations, Patty. Brenda Fallout. I have had the pleasure of working with Brenda Fallouts for 712 years. Her knowledge and experience in the area of student services and scheduling is unmatched and I will miss our many hours working together trying to solve a master schedule puzzle. Brenda always enjoyed the complex challenges that comes with the position and I will miss our thoughtful exchange of ideas. Enjoy your retirement, Brenda, but I may be calling you on occasion when I get back. Patricia Schmidt. Pat Schmidt has been an elementary teacher for 39 years. During her 22 years at Watson, Pat has been a devoted teacher and valued throughout Munster College. She has demonstrated her leadership during her career as a policy chief and an active member of PTO. That will be missed by the Watson family. Congratulations. Kathy Session. Family and consumer science teacher, Lake Central High School, is retiring after 28 years as a family and consumer science teacher. She began her career teaching family and consumer science, specifically home economics, at Vittage Elementary in Hammond, Indiana. She took time off after teaching there for 10 years to raise her children before spending the last 18 years of her career here at Lake Central High School. Miss Session earned her bachelor's degree from Indiana University in May of 1996. As a family and consumer science teacher, Miss Session has been on the cutting edge of technology and its applications in the real world. And she has tried to show students the connection among all subjects they study. She also has stressed the value of her assistance and treated others with respect. Miss Session is patient, kind, and her students trust her. She always recognizes when someone has something special to share with the world. Kathy not only guides students through their first budding romance, but she always... I never got any of that though. But she always makes her classroom feel like a safe place. Her students will always heard her kind words, her caring smile, and her encouragement. She is amazingly talented and can not only look into the eye and give you the behave, but she can simply smile and get the best out of every student who walks into her class. Miss Session has devoted her working life to showing her students the skills and habits of mine that will prepare them for future success. She says her fondest memories of her career are the smiles on the faces of the many students who have accomplished what their parents and administrators and case managers have won thought through her possible tests. Thank you, Kathy. Jim Tomovich. Jim Tomovich served the Lake Central School Corporation for 33 years. If you swim in a pool in Lake and Porter County, there's a very good chance the lifeguard was trained through Mr. Tomovich's right side inside. In addition to training lifeguards and seeking safety, Jim enjoyed his exceptional coaching career in swimming and diving. He is a member of the Indiana High School Swimming and Diving Hall of Fame and is one of the few coaches winning Sprite titles at both different schools. At Lake Central, Jim coached our boys to a team state championship in 1987 and a second place finish in 1990 and 1991. Overall, Jim's one-loss record was off 536 wins, 240 losses, and 5 ties. In 1987, he earned state coach of the year honors and he helped produce 20 individual state champions. A letter received by the school corporation on behalf of Mr. Tomovich reads like this. It is really difficult to believe that you will be retiring with over 40 years teaching experience. I know that you are excited and I want you to know that I'm excited for you. But I must admit that I am a little saddened as well. After all, my very first day as a freshman in high school was the first time I met you. From that point on, I had the pleasure of knowing you as a teacher, coach, and now as a professional. It will be very difficult walking into the pool and not seeing the smile on the face on a daily basis. It has been a real pleasure for me working with you as a professional and learning from you again. I really hope that you enjoy your retirement and that you get to do all the things that you have said you wanted to do over the years. Knowing that you will dearly be missed and that we send our best wishes. Assistant Principal Ed Fatt. Go Green Web. Go Green Web has a gentle spirit and calming force at Pfizer. Her positive attitude and kind demeanor has had a magical effect on those who are privileged enough to be in her class. Her retirement has left a hole in the fabrics of Piper Elementary School. Congratulations, Lori. John Wishesley. Mr. John was and will always be part of the Homan family. His 15 years at Homan went by so quickly. We always joke with him on how he went from working with both females to a whole building level of females needing desks, chairs, pencils, sharpeners, spades, teeth, hair adjustments, and numerous other things. Mr. John was always on top of whatever needed to be done. It was sad for us to see John retire, but we are happy for him. He always breaks the day when he stops him to say hello. We wish him the best on his retirement and we want him to enjoy every minute of his time with his family. Thank you for this. Again, one more round of applause for all the retired members. At this point in time, I would like to take Mr. Bracco's net to item 9, Janet, and which is our teacher of the year. Prior to recognizing this year's teacher of the year, we would like to recognize six teachers who have been honored and been nominated and became semifinalists for this year's awards. In addition to a certificate achievement from the board, semifinalists will also be given the comments submitted with voting. Her respected admiration of peers is a tremendous accomplishment and when it comes to the teacher of the year award, being a winner up is something which all of you should be very proud. Our six semifinalists, uh, Christie Blankenship from Grimmer. Jenny Brackfroth. Rhea Robinson. Emily Graves. Nancy McCoway at Vittage. Nancy McCoway at Vivitch. And Gina Milkarek Clark. Now for our two thousand and seventeen Teacher of the Year with a couple of comments from her peers. First, Joan Logan, Lake Central High School. I cast my Teacher of the Year vote for Joan Logan. Joan is an outstanding educator and colleague. She has created a top-performing AP Calculus BC course. Her students consistently score significantly above the state and national averages on both the AP Calc BC and AP Calc AB exams. I often seek Joan for collaborations. I highly value her opinion. She is a tireless worker and a powerful advocate for her students. Out of all the nominations for this year's Teacher of the Year, I would like to put my vote for Joan Logan. As a teacher outside of the math department, she is recognized as a wonderful mentor and role model to all of our high school teachers. She is determined to help all of her students and manage their large classes with extreme ease and attention to every single detail. Congratulations Jenna. Kim Yelich, Watson Elementary. In my humble opinion, the Teacher of the Year should not only include what a teacher does inside the classroom, but also how he or she works with and educates our students outside the classroom. We know how good a teacher Kim Yelich is. Her record speaks for itself. What she does outside the classroom should be considered as well. She is a role model for our students when they see her officiating high school athletic events. Many people inside the community as well as outside look up to her because she is a leader in the Lake Central area as well as the entire staff. She is an outstanding example of what a teacher is at all levels. She supports her staff helping at the building level. Kim also helps the corporation with her expertise in the area of math and English language arts, developing curriculum to support all students. I have not talked with her, but it's obvious by talking to other staff that she goes above and beyond developing creative teaching strategies to make learning fun. Her expertise of curriculum along with her fun-loving spirit makes her an easy pick for Teacher of the Year. Congratulations. Uh, one more time for our two Teachers of the Year. Okay, now we are moving on to... Our reputation of the Vivitch Elementary School or Master Challenge from how it is a huge PTO.
First of all, this is for the entire district. I'm just representing everyone. First, I'd like to call up some of the teachers who have helped make this possible, and then I'll tell you a little bit about it. If we could have Mrs. Udisch, and Mrs. Thompson, and Mrs. Robinson, and Mrs. Turner, uh, Karen. And also all of your principals who are here this evening to help pass out your student certificates. While they're coming up reluctantly, I'll tell you a little bit about this. The Word Masters Challenge is an exercise in critical thinking where students learn a set of words and then complete analogies expressing various kinds of logical relationships. There are three twenty-minute analogy-solving meets each year where students compete nationally. This has been an excellent year for Lake Central. We had eleven students from across the district receive perfect scores. It is very difficult to achieve a perfect score, so we would like to recognize those students. From Vivitch, Jayden Mays. Ari Pinkins. Danny Smith. Christian Tortorello. And Christopher Wilson.
From Hudson Elementary, Ziva Schranz. Gavin DeLuzia. And Lurita May.
And from Holman Elementary, I call up Mrs. Thompson. She's our third-grade high ability teacher. And we have one lone student out of third grade who is able to get a perfect score, and it's Brayden Purley. From Watson Elementary, we have Andrew Brower from the seventh grade class. Our Word Master Champion from Holman Elementary is Andrew Fiji. So this is a competition where they compete three times, fall, winter, and spring. And each time they're competing against themselves, they're competing with their class against hundreds of other classes across the nation. So, um, I'll ask if they want to go ahead and have a seat now, and we're gonna call up our Vivitch fans. Uh, this year, with the help of their fearless leader, Mrs. Prairie, and a lot of parents who have put in time to study, um, Mrs. Prairie's third-grade class at Vivitch um, placed ninth nationally in the first meet, fifth nationally in the second meet, and we actually just found out today they got second place in the nation for the... So we'd like to call them up. If you could hold applause until we get all of them up here, and then we'll do one great big round. Hannah Arnold. Jayden Mays. Connor Mole. Victoria Kometak. Genevieve Posgro. Sean Crimmon. Ryan Jackson. Justin Jacobs. Jack Jones. Maxwell Joslin. Matthew Padka. David Mansour. Matthew Newton. Temi Olade. Ari Pinkins. Cameron Reddick. Danny Smith. Sarah Soika. Christian Tortorello. Vera Williams. And Christopher Wilson. And finally, the person who made it all happen, who worked hard to help these students, Mrs. Prairie.
Would the parents of these fine young boys and girls stand and be recognized? Next, I'd like to be interviewed, uh, high school principal Sean Bailey, who will roll with the Lake Central High School work ethic certificate.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, thank you for being here. Uh, I'd like to call Bear too. Mr. Bear is with the Board of Workforce Innovations and Youth Employment Council, and he's helped us a great deal with this program. And also Mr. Louise Towns, who did a lot of legwork on it. And what this program is, uh, and I guess we couldn't have planned it any better with our retirees and our teachers that have shown years of service. Uh, the Workforce, uh, uh, Ethic Certificate is a certificate that we award students that show great attendance, that have high GPAs, uh, no discipline, and it's, it's a, a program that we want to increase and, and have our students earn. And when they do this, they're basically showing those employers out there that they have the skills to be successful, uh, employees. And that's kinda what we saw there tonight with our Teacher of the Year, our teachers with many years of service, and our retirees. Um, the Work Ethic Certificate allows school employees to validate students with high attendance rates, no discipline issues, high GPA, involving huge, uh, community service and internships. And these students also display strong skills in areas of organization, time management, reliability, respect, ability to cooperate, collaborate, and lead others. Uh, we have seven tonight that we're gonna recognize, and I hope to grow this into seven hundred next year and continue to be able to build relationships with our local employers, that we are sending out great, uh, young men and women that can help lead our, our community to great, uh, great things. So I'm gonna call up these students. Uh, the first one is Steve Finland, and he was employed by Auntie McPerrick. Uh, our very own Tyler Ford. Tyler works with us right here at the school, and he runs the best Halloween here, uh, amongst many other, uh, TV programs. Our next one applied by Guyard Animal Clinic is Lindsay Toledo. Uh, deployed through the Adventure Club, Jordan McCutcheon. Employed through the Animal Care Center, uh, Darby Morris. Employed through, uh, St. Thomas More After School Care, Tabitha Pax. And finally, employed through, uh, Lake Shore EMS, Preston Petrie. I'd like to, uh... If there's any of the employers here, could you please stand and be recognized? And also the parents, the first teachers, could you stand there? Uh, again, I'd like to thank you all, um, and, you know, I called these seven our, our final years, the first ones to do this. And again, this is something I really hope that we are able to grow and again, build some relationships between us and the community. Thank you.
Yeah, before I come back up to the assembly, uh, I would like to ask that Mr. Pala, um, come on up and give us an update on why the children...
Yeah, for those who, um, have homework to do and are involved in the story of weather, I'd like to give you a sign out.
Bye, congratulations. You guys enjoy your retirement. You deserve it. He said my advice is horrible. I don't know how she's retiring.
Okay.
They're this way, down there.
They did, honey. He was here. He was in the back.
Hi Andy.
Mike, thank you for coming. Thank you for coming.
I'm past you.
I think so too. I'm prejudiced.
Congratulations. I heard about the second screen.
Hi, good to see you. Take care.
Bye, again.
Alright, so we need your brother. Let's go. When I heard your name, I was like, that's so great.
I know, I heard his name and I was like, oh yay! And I was looking around for you.
Anthony got it too. He got a perfect story. Anthony did it. It's so funny. I'm like, just celebrate your brother. He's like, well, I got the same thing. I'm like, nobody's saying you did it. He just like ran off to one. I'm like, they're driving me nuts.
Oh my god, they're so cute.
You know how it is. We love them a lot, but yeah. Alright, let's go. Alright, bye, congratulations. Alright.
Well, I wish, I wish it was that tough act of honor, but that is the reason why I'm here. So it's not a act of honor of honor, but it's a reason why I'm here. I am here on behalf of the Kids Caring and Advising Board, which I'm a member. And one of the reasons that we are here are the students that just left here. So I'm excited to be here this evening, so I hope all of you are feeling well this evening. I am here on behalf of those students who are not feeling well this evening and are receiving excellent care from those at the Riley Hospital locations across the state. So, the Indiana Association of School Principals has been associated with Riley Hospital officially since 1993, which that became, that was the year that became their charity of choice at that time. And kids caring and charity came into effect at that time. It started in Newcastle a few years before that, but then it became officially the charity of choice for the Indiana Association of School Principals in 1993. When I first came on board with it, Jan Hines, who used to be a principal here, asked me if I would like to take her place on that board. So one summer, I went and followed her to a meeting and hooked me by the heart and have been a part of it ever since. So I will interrupt my little spiel here to say that if you are ever in the Indianapolis area, if you let me, if you let me know, I can contact Susan Miles for you on your behalf. If you'd like to have a tour of the hospital there, you're more than welcome to do that. They take tours all the time, so you're welcome to go. So since the Indiana Association of School Principals has begun, had become, begun its association with Riley Hospital, nearly fifteen million dollars has been raised on behalf of those patients. So that is an astounding number. When you look at it though, and you look at the dollars that are raised, we here at Lake Central see faces. And I can tell you that at least three of our schools currently, and I could be shy on that a little bit, have students this year, if not right this very minute, I know that I have a student that is receiving care from the doctors at Riley Hospital even as we speak this evening. So at least three of our schools have students who are receiving care and were referred to doctors, referred to Riley Hospital through doctors in this area. So Riley's Health Foundation has been giving doctors, all over, there's nineteen different communities in Indiana where Riley Health providers are located. And I think our closest one, I believe, is in Crown Point through the Franciscan Care Center. So there are doctors that are associated with Riley's that are all over. I believe it was in that packet that I gave Sabine earlier. So why do we donate to Riley Hospital? Clearly because of the students here. And we all, it all hits home in each one of our schools. And I can just tell you, there was one wonderful story of a little girl that fell and off the bicycle and broke her leg at Piper a few years ago. And that was the best thing that could have happened to her because her leg couldn't heal. And so they found that the bone cancer that was in there, which made her leg so brittle, and they were able to take care of her. And she was out of school for almost two years under the care of Riley Hospital. And she's healthy and ready to go and cancer-free at the moment. So that's just one success story of a former Piper student that I believe is still at Clark, I'm not sure. So that's just one example. Another thing that, another reason that we donate monies to Riley Hospital is to give students who are healthy and maybe those who are not a chance to express some activities and some philanthropic kinds of selfless activities to help those who are in need, who are not as fortunate as they are. So we have a lot of activities throughout the year in all of our schools. And they have all sorts of fun activities and have fundraising money and see the results of that as their schools become miracle schools, which is, the requirement for that is to be about one dollar per child for every school. You can become a miracle school for that year. We have obviously other charities that our schools donate to in other locations. We have the American Heart Association that we all donate to. We have St. Jude's Research Hospital that we all donate to on a regular basis. We have Triton Safety Village, St. John's Food Pantry. All of those activities are ways that our students can provide selfless activities and selfless expressions for others in our community. And I believe that helps our students get a very well-rounded education here at Lake Central School Corporation. Oh, and this is what I forgot to tell you, is that the monies that we are all raising for the past, I think, five years and into the 2019, 2020 school year, and that's just around the corner, believe it or not, the Indiana Association of School Principals money that we raise is going to be going for pediatric research and patient care. That money was donated for that through the advisory board that I am a part of. So all of that money is going to go for patient care and for pediatric research. So if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer those. If not, you can contact me at any time. And you're welcome to come and run a tour. Alright? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. It's awesome. Right. Thank you.
So does anybody else have any questions?
Just a short comment. Doug, thank you for long-term service.
Anybody else? So I get questioned periodically because of Northwest Indiana, why our money doesn't go to the Chicago hospitals? And that's kind of why I wanted to know, I mean, I love Riley's and I know it's very helpful. And I was really happy to see the list of communities, because I didn't know that, that they were throughout the state of Indiana.
And you kind of answered your own question, Dr. Malko, because it's, we're Northwest Indiana. And this is a nationally ranked hospital in Indiana. And I know that there are cases, I had a family tell me, it was just a couple of months ago, they were refused services in Chicago hospitals because they didn't take Indiana insurance. And Riley's Hospital turns away no money. So that's a really good answer for your question.
I would add that a lot of our students who are Indian Medicaid, they cannot go to Chicago hospitals. So a lot of our parents, if they're seeking diagnoses for any sort of like autism or something like that, they end up at Riley. Or those evaluations, because if they're on Medicaid, that's their best option.
So with these average community hospitals, doctors, like the one in Crown Point, they can go there and see this doctor? Now, for example, if I had somebody who was needing services, Riley's obviously would help them transportation down there, do they provide that also? I've heard they do. I've heard they provide transportation. I heard that the other day.
Well, that could be true. I don't know how far they go with that. I believe that they're, I don't know if it's a free service or it's covered under insurance or whatever.
Oh, and then maybe that's it under insurance. Okay. Well, that certainly does answer the questions that occurred to me. So I appreciate you taking the time. Any other questions? Alright, thank you. If you think that one of you are over, if you like. Alright, and who do you want to Mr. Ganneldy?
Thank you, Dr. Malko. My first item is just to seek your approval for the personal recommendations in the revised packet that was established.
Move to approve.
Second. Alright, we have a motion and we have a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All of those same sign. And motion carries. Thank you.
Great, thank you. My second item I bring to you every year is to seek your approval to hire certified staff. This request becomes necessary as we plan for and secure certified staff for the start of the 2017-18 school year. This will give us an opportunity to hire qualified individuals who can fill critical positions as quickly as possible and secure the best candidates for Lake Central School Corporation. Of course, I will always bring those in front of you at the next available board meeting. But because we only have one board meeting in July and hiring for certain positions that we have available in the corporation to become critical, I seek your ability to work with those candidates and get them onboard prior to the next board meeting.
Move to approve.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All of those same sign. And motion carries.
Thank you. Now, that's about it. It's just a little bit of information on the implementation of House Enrol Act 1079. This is the new requirement that came out of the legislative session that requires us to perform a background check on all employees' certificates that are known as classified. The law states that we have a five-year window to do that starting July 1st of 2017. We have already started moving forward on the process for this, utilizing Safe Hiring Solutions, which is the company that already does our background checks. We have decided that we will be twenty-five percent of our staff over a four-year period. We are using a randomized program, so all of our staff certified, classified, everybody that has not been tested, that did not go through the background check when we implemented that, it was within that five-year window. Goes through this randomized process on an Excel spreadsheet. It spits out an individual with a number, and it looks like we will be doing about two-hundred-and-sixty every year for the next four years. And then that process will continue to rotate from this point forward. So in a four-year period, we have all of those staff that started with us prior to us implementing a background check procedure. And then moving forward, it will be a revolving, of course, with staff moving off and other staff coming to that town. Keep in mind that everyone that we hired last year, you know, we did the background check on that year before. But there are many, many folks here, probably close to eight hundred, who we have never done a background check because it was prior to the requirement and prior to the corporation adopting the program. So there'll be much more information that will go out to our staff in the next two weeks on that. So if you hear anything about the process of how the assembly works my way, the law will be getting them, it'll be different numbers for certified as well as classified. But I think we have a decent handle on how we're going to move forward. Dr. Brock, do you have anything?
I just want the board to remember that as we talk to our legislators towards in the future, it's another unfunded mandate. So there is a cost associated with all these tests, and it will quick to pass the law, but not very quick to provide the supporting financials.
And I will say that Dr. Brock did a great job with our local legislators and all of our legislators downstate, you know, trying to get them to look at this process, which we do believe is a good process, but trying to look at this process being tied to the renewal of the teacher's office. Do it at the same time that people renew their CPR and, but although Dr. Brock fought for us in North Carolina with his own super tennis association, it sort of fell on that year's big side of that law when it comes to what was done.
Don't teachers have to have a background check when they get their license and they apply?
Not anymore.
Really? Interesting. Alright, are there any questions about this on the panel committee?
No.
How much is a test for an individual?
Well, over thirty-three dollars. If we'd allocated, it would be about ten thousand dollars a year if we had to account on the costs. At least for the first four years.
Are all corporations starting early to the cycle pattern, or are you...
We're a little bit ahead of RFS, because there are some policy adjustments that need to be made in board policy. You'll see those at our next meeting. So I think that, and I did confer with our attorney just to see where other school principals who are at, we're about three weeks ahead of everybody else. But I do look at, again, you know, underneath a sort of a person board policy. We don't really want to wait until August, because then Safe Hiring Solutions is backed up. And, you know, although the law gives you an opportunity to hire an individual, allow them to start working for you, and you don't need that background check for two months. We here have always philosophically worked under the premise that we want that background check completed and in the file prior to day one. So we're going to continue to move down that path. In order to do that though, we need to get started.
Any discussions or questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Ganneldy. And Director Primarina?
Thank you. My first item is to seek your approval of a professional leave request that were included in the packet.
So... Second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All of those same sign. And motion carries.
Thank you. My second item is to share some information about the high ability program evaluation. I did include the electronic version of the final report, and there should also be a hard copy at your page. It is lengthy, so I'm not sure if we had time to read it and go through it. But just to highlight that the consultants were very complimentary of the work that we've done to start in building a strong program for high ability students. They also shared some areas for improvement and gave us suggestions on how to improve in those areas. So our next steps will be for me to share the report with the Broad-based Planning Committee at a meeting on May 23rd, and then from there, we'll develop program goals and begin working on making improvements. Any questions?
Excuse me, I did not get to go through the whole...
It's a little...
I would say we'll hit through, yeah. This is maybe a quarter of it, but...
The summary is like the clip goes.
Yeah, exactly. I'll jump right to the back. From what I saw from the record itself, it looked very, very, very good, very, very professional. And also, it's just complimentary from what I saw briefly about some of the events so far.
So you will be taking this to your Broad-based Planning Committee on May 23rd?
Right.
So you'll be developing goals to meet the...
Right. There are a lot of improvements, there are a lot of suggestions, so we'll pick the ones that are...
I really appreciate the depth of the analysis.
They were very thorough.
And I will be reading through this, and I apologize, I didn't have the time. I cannot read on that computer screen, so thank you for the hard copy. Appreciate that very much. And thank you for sharing it with us. Are there any comments or questions from anyone else on the board or anybody on attendance? No? Alright, thank you. Let me know.
Okay, my final item is to share the elementary school handbook changes, and who is going to present those to you? Good evening. I'm just responsible for sharing the changes with you. I just want you to know that we do, we share a common handbook across all six of our elementary schools. And six principals along with, as a show, we have worked together to, the changes are very minor this year. Does everyone have a copy of that? I don't know if you also have my slip notes. It was just a one-page slip note that I added that shows the changes. And if you have a colored copy, the changes are all highlighted. Many of the highlights in the packet are just updates on the website links, because you know our district website changed this year. And then the other changes that actually changed some of the policies or procedures that are in there that were asking for are on page three. We have the character education program that's listed in there as a monthly program that we all follow. And that is something that has kind of evolved in our buildings to include character education on many...
on many topics throughout the year and some of us in different ways. So, I assure you that it is in all of our buildings. Dr. Ruck, you asked us at our last administrative meeting to share all of the ways we do character education, so we'll bring more information to you. But we took out the monthly themes because we really are hitting so many things every day in our buildings, so we just wanted to make it very general on the character traits that we work on every day in our buildings. On page nine, we added that parents are not permitted to eat lunch in the cafe. That's something that all of our schools have followed for years, but it wasn't written in there, and that's just for safety and protecting our educational environment that we do that, so we wanted to add that language. On page 10, we added to be very specific about parent volunteers or guests being in the building, that they are to be in their designated area, and I know that you were recently visited by some Coling parents about building safety, and surely that is a concern for all of our buildings, and we want to, again, protect that educational environment, make sure our buildings are safe. And so, we want that language in there. The parents must be in their designated area, but not free to roam the halls or visit teachers. And lastly, on page 13, we wanted to change the timing start from being 8:10 to 8 o'clock, because parents are often confused that that's the time their kids are to show up to our buildings, when in fact they need to be in their seats at 8:10, and so we sometimes have tardy issues because of that. And so, we wanted to change that language in there to show 8 o'clock is when we should be entering the building. And then it stated in there that the tardy bell rings at 8:10, so that there's no confusion. And that's all of the changes.
Okay, any questions? All right, thank you. Appreciate that. And moving on to Director Secondary.
Thank you. For my first item, I am seeking your approval for the professional leave request presented.
Move to approve.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All of those same sign.
Thank you. For my next item, I am seeking your approval for the field trip request as presented.
Move to her.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All of those same sign. And motion carries.
And for my last item, in the board packet, there was a letter from Dr. Ruck asking the board to sign off in support of our Lilly implementation grant. We put in quite a bit of time over the past couple of months with the number of consultants to try to get this in order. What we came up with were two areas of focus. The first one was to vertically horizontally align our counseling curriculum. This is sort of following the same pathway we've been going down with our academics. We want to get consistency across grade levels, across schools, and then we want to look vertically at scaffolding that curriculum that is building upon previous year. The model we're going to follow is the Asken National Model, which is very well researched. And then we also want to have a lot of focus on sort of three key areas, academics, careers, and then personal and social development. We want to give a lot of attention to the transition years from fourth and the fifth grade, eighth and ninth grade, and then evolve into post-secondary. The second thing that we built into the grant was to try to increase the direct services for our students. We have some very large student council ratios in some of our schools, and so we're proposing adding two additional staff members, one at the high school level and one to be shared at the middle school level, to try to provide services for our media students, which then brings up some time for our counselors to serve the other students that are on the casebook. We've also built some programs into the grant as well that will help us work a little smarter, not harder, with non-ambience and also perhaps some learning systems that will help us identify those students who are mainly based on missing performance indicators like attendance behavior and academics, which are some of the key focus points that we look at in the analysis. So, I am asking the board people for the letter that we presented supporting the Lilly implementation grant.
Okay, what is the pleasure of the board?
I'd like to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Is there any discussion? Any questions?
I like that. I like the way you have it laid out, especially, you know, in the second paragraph there, they're talking about the transitioning from, you know, those earlier stages of learning, you know, transitioning to the older, the older classroom sites, but it's really, the way it's written is, is well clear.
Beautiful. Larry's what you like, Larry Flaherty.
Yeah.
I especially like that transition component that you put in there because as they spin from the smaller elementary schools into the larger middle schools and into the wider high school levels overwhelmingly, and that's usually a point of thought for many people, so. I think that attention will be highly successful. And I believe I asked this before, but this doesn't tie into special, the transition will also focus on special needs students and their transition.
Of course, it's open for all of our students. We've had some of our school service providers working on this grant as well, so giving their insight on all the tools that we put together. And I do remember submitted a thing, was writing our grant, she's been initially helping bring this grant together as opposed to earmarkings to put on our counselors at KU Middle School, off the cap, it's been very helpful with this process as well.
So, we have a motion and a second. And do we need a vote? Yes? All in favor?
Aye.
All of those same sign. All right, motion carries. Thank you. We hand the papers up, leave it on the progress. We have a hopefully good news in the hall. Absolutely. All right, and Mrs. Gormel.
My only item tonight is to seek your approval for the professional leave request that was included in your packet.
Move to approve.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All of those same sign. And motion carries. Mr. Ledger.
Thank you. Tonight I have four items, three I'll be seeking approval on. My first item is to seek your approval of board to execute the contract for the home in Piper, new chimp floors will be installed this summer. We had, I invited Connor and Hollerman Home and Hollerman Home declined the bid because they didn't think they could be real competitive, because their urethane is not really their specialty. But so Connor, sports flooring for Holman, I'd like to award for $52,500.
Move to her.
Second.
Okay. And they're out of online, correct?
Connor, yes.
And what was the other company?
Hollerman Home.
And where did they have it?
They're out of online as well.
Okay. No one in Indiana did it?
This is kind of specialty.
Ah, okay.
Bill, can you tell us a little bit about the flooring?
Oh, yes, it's, as we were talking before, it's a powder urethane, it's a two-coat system, because last year we put the same flooring in at Watson Village, but we only had to use the base of the top coat there because they had existing floors that were kind of around the same type of urethane that we could use their existing as a base. So, this year, unfortunately, at Holman, there's this carpet, so we had to rip the carpet off and put it out in concrete, so we had to use the base coat as well. Like I have a note here, it's a seven-millimeter base plus a two-millimeter finish. And you know, Piper has a, we were talking, it's probably about a 40-year-old, four-foot vinyl welded floor. So, we have to, we could go over it, but we have to put the base down there as well. So, this year, unfortunately, both two schools were having the base coat, but we didn't have it for Watson last year. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
No.
Okay. Do, do we have a motion on them? All right, and we have a second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All of those same sign. And motion carries.
Thank you. And would also like to seek your approval of board Connor Sports Flooring for the Piper floor as well in the amount of $61,900.
Move to approve. Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All of those same sign. And motion carries.
Thank you. Bill, what is the, down those two floors? I mean, what, it's $9,000 difference, what's the difference, what's the difference in Piper so much, it's bigger gym? Okay, yeah, square foot each. Piper is a bigger gym than Holman. Thank you. Next item is to seek your approval of board to execute that contract for the Piper carpet removal. This year, we are going to do the library, library's office, as well as what I'm calling two lobby areas outside of the library, as well as the under 10-foot hallway that runs behind the library and office. So, that's, we're going to tackle all that this summer. So, with that, I'd like to seek your approval to award Stans Painting and Hometown Floors in the amount of $37,745 for a combination of carpet removal and new VCT on the floors and carpet removal and painting of the walls.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? So, they'll have much carpeting is left in Coling then after this?
This is Piper.
Or? Okay, how much is left in Piper after this?
Um.
Did you have all that downstairs?
Just a little bit upstairs of the library, that's about it. It's that whole, that arc. We, well, the arc, we did the arc room, but yeah, just that.
The hallway.
Yeah, the hallway outside the arc room.
Okay, so all of that is out of the downstairs area?
Yep. This will finish without Caesar.
Okay, thank you. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All of those same sign. And motion carries.
Thank you. My last action item is to seek your approval to award a contract of specialty construction to remove carpet out of 14 classrooms, a copy room, and a work room at Coling Elementary School in the amount of $48,800.
Move to approve.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions?
Hey, Bill, nothing to do with the carpets? They could, I don't know, or they could feel that just.
They're chopping and dumping pitches.
Yes, yeah, I was just wondering.
Yes.
You know, that.
The carpet and those rooms done are, it's probably, it's probably five and a year thick in some areas. And some of that stuff's 25 to 30 years old.
Okay, just wondering.
So, does that complete Coling then with carpeting?
Oh, no, no, we did, we did all the cotton areas, all the, all the main hallways, and this will, this will basically get the entire southwest wing, so we'll just test thirty. It's, it's a lot of factors. It's a factor of obviously money, it's always a factor. But as much so as money is time, I mean, this, 14 rooms is all you can handle in the summer because it's a matter of cleaning out the rooms, removing the carpet, it's all you do with VCT. That VCT has to sit seven to 10 days before you wax it, then our custodians have to give them like six coats of wax and move it back in. So, it's a time factor too, and we can, we do more, that's about as much as we can do in a, in a school like that.
And where is Summer's school this, this summer?
Uh, the, Mr. Gendolphy's in.
Remember, it's Watson.
Watson?
Watson High School and a little bit of Holman.
All right, does Watson, Watson doesn't have carpet, does it?
Uh, Watson's, we're pretty much, all, all the classroom areas are done in Watson. I think the teachers lounge in your office, I think that's it. Yeah.
Couple small.
We've been, we've been tapped in at the last, over the summers. We were gay.
All right, good. All right. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All of those same sign. And motion carries.
Thank you. My last item is just a quick update on the new salt storage building over at the transportation center. We have, we have completed all the exterior work as far as the shingles and siding. We are, we have started painting today. All the paint will be done this week, and we keep having good weather. We have a little bit of landscaping to do and some cleanup, and the garage door we have to put on, which is supposed to be here beginning of next week. So, I would say by the end of next week, we should pretty much wrap up that project.
Good. And are you ready for your meeting at St. John next week?
It's Monday, yes. We've terminated, we've submitted everything that we were required to do.
We'll move it forward then. All right, any questions about anything relating to the building projects? All right, thank you, Mr. Ledger.
Thank you.
All right, and moving on. Mr. Marino's out here. Mr. James.
Thank you, Dr. Marshall. I'll be looking at my address to seek your approval on a variety of donations. On the received side, the high school boys golf team received $1,000 from the Non-Trust donor. Kayler received a donation of $57.72 from the Wells Fargo Community Support Campaign. Piper received $28.15 as a donation from Red Rodman. Kayler also received $25.50 from Red Rodman. The Holman Elementary PTO would like to donate $160 for the purchase of a video software license open school view. On the given side, the high school student council will like to donate $2,000 to the cancer research center. And Habitat for Humanity Club will like to donate $177 to Habitat for Humanity. Hart Middle School will like to donate $1,798 to Riley's. Piper would like to donate $907 and one cent to Riley's. The Grimmer Middle School Student Council would like to donate $946 to Riley's. And the National Junior Honor Society of Grimmer would like to donate $100 to Riley's and $446 to St. Jude to help the center. So, I seek your approval on all those donations received and to be given.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, that's fine.
We have a motion and we have a second. Any discussion? Nice job with all those donations. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All of those same sign. And motion carries.
Thank you. Go ahead.
All right. And any public comments? All right, thank you. Any board comments? Mr. Marshall?
Uh, nothing in particular. It was gratifying to go through the process tonight to recognize our staff, and it always leaves me with a good feeling, Marky now. Thank you.
All right, Mrs. Suits.
Hi, Dr.
And Mr. Baxter?
Uh, I have, I know what the power says, it's kind of like the seed. All the teachers and support staff come across and receive, you know, their retirement gifts, but it's also sad, same way, as you think about all that talent and all that knowledge that's coming out the door. But I'm very grateful for having their service to our community and to our school corporation. And those little kids up front, I think they, they're just so excited tonight to be here. And when they came through, you could just see the big smiles on their faces. They're just so excited to get the award and come through here, so it's just, it's great that we get to do that, kind of keep them going. Those, those young adults, some sort of A-1 certificate, and so on. Thank you.
Thank you, and I agree. I, I feel that gentleman has said, and they were so excited. And the synergy, did you feel it in the room, the synergy tonight? It was just, everybody was so excited and celebrating good things. And very, very proud that the high school has adopted the work ethic participation. I mean, I read about it in the paper, but I didn't know we were doing it, so that's, that's great. I'm sure that puts you on the cutting edge.
I don't know if I'm a cutting.
I mean.
They, they transfer shows their great children, really want to also have a part to show their soft skills and show out.
Absolutely.
You very needed work hard, and that's important.
Because I just thought it was a dream that was out there. I, I never thought it would.
Again, these are hard, you know, to see, hoping it's a physical management.
Absolutely. Well, thank you for that. We appreciate it. All right, and Dr. Ruck?
Yeah, for our calendar events, I want to remind the board that tomorrow, most of us will be at Teles starting at 6:30 for dinner, and then to hear the ISBA executive director and school, or not school attorney, ISBA attorney, staff attorney, talk about the legislative session, some of the changes and how that will impact us. So, we look forward to that meeting. Later in the week, we also have Friday at 1 o'clock, the Fallen Officers Memorial at Sherwood, which Mr. Gendolphy and I have been fortunate to go to the last couple of years. If you can squeeze that in after lunch, that's 1 o'clock at the town Sherwood, it's, it's your time. We get into next week, we also have, we are going back to the town of St. John Board of Zoning Appeals for our monument site at the front of the building, and so we hope for the best on that. That's 7:00 PM at the town of St. John. And then on the 25th, Thursday, I talked to Mrs. Suits about this earlier today, so the TAP graduation, 11 o'clock at the TAP facility on Old 30. We get into task number of the day, of course, another parent for graduation on the 4th, and then we get back here on the 5th, so. Oh, and one other thing, on the 31st of May is our World No Tobacco Day, the big smokeout, and we are hosting that press conference at 9:00 AM. It will last about an hour. Hopefully, a few of my peers amongst, like county superintendents will join us and make a statement that we'll do all we can to support legislation in the future to try to deter young people from beginning this morning.
Okay. Do we need reservations to attend the TAP graduation? Do we need to notify you and just shut it out, just come on out? All right. And we can pick up a, a book for me to come out?
Will do.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
No, just a short reminder, I'm sure the board and the administrators have found out that the executive director of ISBA is retiring. He's been with us three years, and he sent that email, Janice, you look visible. Well, I received it.
When did you charge that? Today?
No, a couple of days ago. Yeah, he had three-year run, and now they're going to be picking another one, so.
Mr. Smith, Dr. Smith?
Yes, sir. You got it, Doc?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
So, that's.
All right, thank you for that.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? All right. I will let our team imagine to adjourn.
Move, move for adjournment.
I heard that.
You adjourned. Thank you for that.